This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, wow. We don't see much. Also, wow. We're living up in the world.
Yeah, so that nice. We wait for some other German to make a soft voice.
Let's hope we learned our lesson.
One thing I learned that is I was in your position in March. We have to really review our properties.
Yeah, and the town is a kind of a modified property. How about your little recorder? Usually you place your little recorder here. You just. Oh, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Call this meeting to order. And Carla, could you proceed with the roll call?
Alvin and Member Brennan.
Here.
Vice Chair Carey.
Here.
Member Henigan.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Kaczynski.
Here.
Shall we pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with the regular meeting, is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to review.
Vice Chair, I'm so sorry. Is it okay if I make a comment at this point?
You may or you may.
It has nothing to do with this.
We reserve time at the end for commission comments too. So whichever time you'd prefer.
Okay, I'll hold.
Just remind me at the end, so I don't skip over that. And so we'll proceed with the review of the minutes. There any comments or corrections on the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we will now proceed with the quasi judicial hearing for 62 Harbor Drive North. Town clerk, could you read the agenda, the item?
Quasi judicial hearing for 62 Harbor Drive North.
This proceeding is now called to order on agenda item number two. At this time, any ex parte communication should either be disclosed or identified by the subject of the communication and identify the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place. Is there, has there been any communication by anyone here ex parte?
No.
No.
Thank you. We will proceed with the hearing. Town clerk, will anyone wish?
We're in. Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand? You have confirmed to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, when you come forward, please state your name and address, credit for the record, whether or not you have been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone that does not really work.
Now we'll have the town staff give their presentation on this matter. Corey?
Chair Commissioners, Corey O'Gorman, town planner. This is a development plan review for 62 Harbor Drive South, including demolition of existing single-family home and construction of a new two-story four-bedroom or bath, two-car garage, swimming pool, and outdoor living area. The recommendations for approval or conditions is outlined in the report and attached memo from the works director. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
Mr. Chair, if you would, can we reserve the right to have staff make additional comments after this as Germany?
Yes. Yeah, thank, thank you. And please remind me when we get to that point before we close the. Having heard that the town planners report and we're reserving time for the building official and town engineer when they arrive, the applicant now has the opportunity to make the presentation.
That's right, microphone. Good morning, everybody. My name is Freddie Palladio. I'm with Rennsoft Architects here along with T L A Design Group and Coffin and Wheeler, landscape architect and civil engineer for the project 62 Harbor Drive North. What we're proposing is a coastal seaside residence with Dutch elements, clean lines, white stucco finish, some dark walnut wood accents. What we also have is a four bedrooms. Let's see here. We have four bedrooms, three powder rooms, four bathrooms. We are accommodating four parking spaces total on the lot, two within the garage and two within the more core. We feature an outdoor living, new pool and spa, nice landscape buffer boat residence on the other end. We provided adequate drainage on the site, which will be completed by Mr. Matt with Coffin and Wheeler and the landscape by P L A. We have a dark concrete tower roof, four walls within the eaves, nice outdoor living spaces, and luscious grounds. Any questions?
Anyone has questions, please proceed.
You are the builder.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. He's a good builder, yeah?
Yes, sir. I'm the land chief architect. The builder is not present.
Okay, I happen to live on Harbor Drive North, and it's a nice piece of property. I've walked it several times. It'll be nice to see something go in. But I do have some questions, and maybe staff can help me with some of this as well. You're on a cul-de-sac, and there's going to be a lot of concrete pour to make this thing work. And I'm curious how you're going to manage the traffic, because you get a string of cement trucks coming down to feed the foundation pour, and the whole street's going to be tied up. And as soon as the first truck is done, it's going to need to do a turn in the cul-de-sac, probably run over people's lawns, and all the way up the street until they're clear of the other trucks. So this is a big issue with me, managing the traffic and not damaging adjacent neighbors' properties during the process. So do you guys have a way to manage this? Or does the town have any enforcement on this? Because it, it's a neat piece of property, and I want to see it done, but I want to see it done so that the neighbors aren't adversely impacted. So is there any plan for that?
Well, we will work together with Ocean Ridge to accommodate a construction administration, so to speak, so that whatever procedures are occurring on the site is not only coordinated with the town, overall, following any protocols, making sure that, you know, access to driveways, adjacent neighbors, and also traffic is taken into consideration. What we'll do is we'll work with the, actually, I'll work with the contractor, the select contractor, and also work with the town and come up with a plan that would suffice.
Mr. Hutchins, we do have a very robust construction site management handbook that the contractor and the owner needs to sign prior to construction, and we have many codes on the books that will address your concerns, and we do have an enforcement mechanism.
Okay, so if, if, if a neighbor is impacted, they should contact?
The town immediately.
Because I have talked to the neighbors, and everybody feels the same. Beautiful home going in, but how is it going to affect me? And in the confines of that street, it could be kind of interesting. So I look forward to seeing how that works out.
Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I do, but it really needed Durrani to be here.
We can.
And Tara, I have questions for both of them.
We can wait till they return.
So I'd like to hold that in abeyance, please.
Roger?
Yeah, I was looking at the aerial views that, just from Google, and I noticed that there's quite a wide stand of vegetation along the Thompson Street easement, and then it continues along the intracoastal. And looking at the plan, I couldn't tell whether you were going to leave that undisturbed or whether you're requesting to clear that area. You can put up the picture, Carla, if you want.
It would be just, just to the left of the picture we're looking at is what, because that shows actually more rock there in that picture than I think exists. I think that's your point.
It's pretty close to that.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that will probably be disturbed just due to the nature of construction.
I saw one place that said something was stained.
Yeah, I did too.
Sure.
So proceeding roughly from the top, next to what looks like a deck. It appears to be about six or eight feet, maybe 10 feet wide. Then it proceeds in the L along the intracoastal.
Yes, and so there, there are existing shrubs in there that we're planning to keep. So those will be uninacted.
There's, there's arica palms in there, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We would take those.
And but there's also ficus in, in that as well. So is the plan to keep all of it?
No, we would take out the aricas and the ficus as well.
Okay, then, then you wouldn't really have anything left, I don't think.
What's left? I mean. I'm looking at this picture right here. This is on landscape disposition L1.
Somewhere I read a comment that said it was going to remain.
Here, now. Familiar with that patch. We, we intend to keep that, that's adjacent, next to the rocks, right?
If you look, well, it goes, there's a short stub next to the rocks that's in the town easement, and then there is that longer, wider patch that's between the two homes.
Okay, I was speaking to the part on, on the water.
Yeah. I'm, I'm as concerned with the wide area between the homes.
If it's on our property, so, so there are existing aricas and, like I said, that kind of split the property lines, we are going to keep those as best as possible. We might need to trim them back to get the new landscape in buffers along the sides, but the intent is to keep as much of that as possible.
What, what does "as possible" mean?
If it impacts the placement of the new shrubs that are going along the property lines, where, where it would impact the roof, we might need to trim, trim some single stalks off here and there, but just to give us enough planting room in there, so we're not impacting the civil that's coming in as well. Because we need to stay three feet off, off the civil.
If I look at, at L2, I don't see that planning area marked at all, and I see a large row of trees, unless that row is, is supposed to indicate what I'm concerned about.
The clouds.
That, that's, that's the front. It's, it's the other side that doesn't seem to show it at all.
Yeah, I don't think that big cluster is shown.
It looks like something else is. Pretty much the same. I read it too.
It's all clean. Right. Well, there's, there's existing shrub here, but that looks further back than what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think this thing shrub hedge, that's along the river. It's all property. And then there's an adjacent hedge that splits the property line.
Is there a retaining wall that goes in along that property line?
Yes. Yes, there will be.
It's going to be hard to do anything if there's a retaining wall being put in. It's going to be gone. It'll just be, it's got to be honest about that. You know, the landscape plan has to work with the engineering plan when they're coming in to put puddings in for a retaining wall. It didn't go, it didn't go to be there, is it, engineer?
Is it, can I ask a question? What we're talking about is screening on the east side of the property, correct?
Right.
So I'm not a big fan of either arica or ficus for screening. They're, they're, they're pain in the neck plantings. Is it possible that the developer?
I think it's the north side of the property, not the east.
No, it's, it's, it's the east.
Near the edge of the driveway.
It's, it's, it's the one adjacent to the other house. And is it possible that something could be planted if you, I understand the need for the wall. But is it possible to have something planted as a screen once that's done?
Something on L2 that I can't interpret, but.
Can you just identify what your screening is along there, because you clearly have?
Yes. So along the front, we have a five-foot potocarpus hedge, and we like, we like to put a carpet hedge because it's dense, it's compact. We can maintain it in a narrow footprint because we're competing with the civil in that space because it is very tight. And then as we transition in the back property, we're switching to a hedge, which is again dense, full of base. That can exceed, you know, it's a, it's a fast grower, so we put it in at six foot, within two years, I could be up to eight feet. So that, that's a really good screening option for that area.
Those are both good and dense.
Could answer your question?
But what are you, how are you going to screen the, the east side adjacent to the other house?
With the potocarpus hedge, the five-foot potocarpus hedge.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineer or architect or, or landscape architect?
Just one, and I'm not, I'm not sure that there's any possibility. This appears to be a fairly challenging lot in some respects, and I think you've done a beautiful job, and the home is gorgeous, and I love the way you've broken things up. It does help with the massing. That one element right on the front to the left, it's just quite, is there any ability to soften that with, right there with any landscaping at all? Like low, I, I don't know if you can, there may not be room to get a bed in there.
That, that's where the drain field is going?
No, just in front.
I'm going there.
That's the drain field? No, because that's concrete, so it can't be drain filled.
I don't think the rendering is activated appropriately. The large concrete area is septic drain field, but there's, you know, 10 feet or so. You can see the grass area in the front, and they do have trees and shrubs that are not shown. Yeah, the rendering.
I see, that's just the rendering.
But the landscape plan doesn't show any planting along that single window on the left there.
Correct, because we're so close to that drain field. I mean.
Can the drain field be adjusted?
But there's, there's grass there. You're saying adjacent to the wall, not concrete? So that breaks it up a bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That, that already.
Right.
Okay.
In addition, from the road, there's a line of trees and shrubs that are screened at the house. Correct, we push the landscape forward to back the right away.
I see it now, kind of a little weird pie shape.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I apologize.
So we have that continuous five-foot hedge along the right away, and then behind that, we're stepping to give it some more bearing, some massing. We've got 14-foot green buttonwood, which are native.
That, oh, absolutely. I love those. That helps tremendously.
And then to give us some more massing and kind of unify the front, we're coming in with 15-foot clear chunks of vessels, so you're talking 20, 22-foot spread. So that will kind of knock out that entire second story. Sorry, Freddie, I love this, but, um, yeah, we'll, we'll.
It softens it.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
So I do have a comment about the drain field.
Please.
Tara, can, can you, can you address both the size of the drain field and the impact of your comment, the, the engineering comments that you made? I see on this tally of numbers, two different sizes for the drain field. The applicant has said 157 square feet, and the town building official has said 650. And I'm assuming the one that's drawn is 400 and so on. Is the town official including the two-stage tanks in that additional number?
We need to get.
We need to get Tara sworn in.
Here, where you can be closer so you can pick up for.
Your comment is the septic area is draining to the right of it from your March 30th engineering.
You're the historic and a firm truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Copy.
So you're referring to comment number two?
So we're clear? Yes.
So this comment has to do with drainage, not necessarily the size of the septic system?
Well, I'm, I'm making the comment on the size because of what I saw on the data calculations. That's what I'm, that's what I was asking. There's still quite a discrepancy with what the applicant. As there are in many of these other.
I mean, I, I don't have any of that information on me regarding the size. Yeah.
Is there potential that size comment that these are, you could have been about a standard septic system in place from a 16% structural?
Compared to the way Arizona officials calculated, and I know many calculations and things could.
The 457 is a pretty common number for the hoot size.
Well, new construction requires a hoot.
Correct, correct.
So is it possible he calculated non-hoot?
Well, I was just, I was just trying to get a determination of what else he put into that number, but.
Carla, if you go down, I think you passed it, but she probably.
Do you want to start with what the applicant calculated and then go from there?
Well, I'm just, I'm concerned about the comment of its, where it's draining, because I'm, this, okay, the comment about the house that Commissioner Kaczynski stated, I also have no comment about the styling of the house, other than what I think is happening here is the septic drain field is driving the use of the available space in front of this house. And I think the house, in way it's going to relate to the street, I, I think it's rather harsh. Okay? I, I think quite a bit of mitigation is needed on the front of this house in terms of softening landscape. And if the only, okay, could you leave that one right there? If the only softening landscape that's going in is in that tiny little triangle between those two large palm displays on that drawing right there, depending on what happens with this drain field, if that area is impacted and becomes even smaller, I just don't think this is an acceptable landscaping design at the front of the house.
I don't see why it would become smaller. I think my comment is just so.
Well, if it has to move.
I'm not asking for it to move.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking about comment number two.
No, I'm just asking the flow that's coming off that area.
You're asking what?
The flow, the drainage flow.
Yes.
Coming off that area.
Yes.
Should not go into the road. But I think in that landscape area and moving it towards the driveway, they, they could, it won't go into the right way. If they use that landscape area and then silver towards the driveway where the trench drain is, they can, they can address that comment.
Okay, and the trees that are going in there are going to be fairly mature buttonwoods at the time of planting? Okay. Okay.
It's pretty good. That particular lot, the way it's shaped.
It's challenging.
Well, but it also, there's not very much viewing visibility, viewing of the, of whatever's put in there. It's because of the way it's set. So I, I don't know that it's going to be quite as dominant as I feel you suggesting it could be.
Well, I, I went down, I went and looked at both, hey, I went and looked at the site and looked at what, what is going on with the house next door, and I'm using a reference, the pictures that are included in this package. Where are they? Where they've inserted a, a rendering of the house into there.
That was very helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you, architect. S C.
But again, it doesn't show.
Half dozen pages from the rear.
Yeah, correct. The, the one at the bottom left of the two horizontal rows of pictures. I, I think the house is going to be, I mean.
But.
Pretty stark.
That looks to me like you're seeing a lot more house than I think you're going to see. I mean.
Well, I think the large vegetation that's there now is going to be coming down, and it's going to be replaced by what will only be a five-foot potocarpus hedge on the right-hand side. Same thing on the left, because of the needs of the engineering.
So that, if I may, the.
Could you step forward?
The rendering depicted is just a linear flat composition of what the massing is going to be. It's not really shown in perspective of the way it actually sits on the lot. The pictures were of a reference of massing and size to the adjacent ones, where the rendering, which is on the cover sheet, actually shows the way that it sits on the lot.
What, what's absent here is that the rendering doesn't show street landscaping, and I think we need the landscape architect to come and give us some assurance and possibly even propose something more than a five-foot potocarpus along that east property line that would be better framing of this house and, and make it. So ask the landscape architect to talk again about, walk us through and help us understand what you're going to see.
I mean, I mean, what I'm seeing when I go to the site and what I'm seeing in these renderings is you have, you've kept the house as close physically to the front of the lot almost that you could. Whereas if the house had been deeper into the lot, you would have, you would have been able to mitigate, you've been able to blend and soften. But once again, we, I, to speak to the architect, we have a solution here that's being driven We have a solution here that's being driven by space at the back of the building that is non-far recreational use space that's underneath the roof. And that's not letting you push the house further into the lot. And I brought this up at another, the other meeting with the house on Ocean. We need to address how much of this space we let slip in between the cracks of what is porches, what is decks that is non-far? Because it is taking up footprint. And the footprint is driving where the houses are located on the available space.
But I'm not certain, I, I agree with you, but we don't have any directive on that today.
I understand, I understand that.
No, Bob, I'm just, I don't know if we can make, go, have them go back on something that doesn't.
I'm not trying to get them to go back. I'm just, what I'm saying is if you are going to take advantage of outdoor space for your use, I'm going to push you really hard on putting landscaping in on the space that you've left to the town and to the community. You're doing what's good for you. I'm trying to do what's good for the community. And I don't think that's being addressed once again. Because we, we are shoving this house as close as we can to the street, leaving the minimum space that is there for a drain field. The drain field could have been put in 10 different places if there had been less use of outdoor space at the back.
One caveat of the drain field design is with the canal bordering the site on three sides being at the end of the cul-de-sac. We need a 75-foot setback from that canal water. So it really puts the drain field only in the front yard as far as.
No, I understand. I understand.
I'd like the landscape architect to talk to us about what's, the plantings are in that triangle there at the front.
Sure, can you zoom in please to the.
Are either of those a shade tree?
The green buttonwood, 14-foot, would be considered a shade tree. Depending on the maintenance, the growth pattern. You can let them, you can keep them columnar. That's why they're used in urban environments. They're used in downtown Delray, but they can also spread and knit together. So yes, you can.
And, and both of those are the buttonwoods?
The three in the middle are the silver button, are the green buttonwoods. And the two 16s, those are your Sylvester Day balls.
And those row of other smaller plants that front the road.
That's your continuous five-foot potocarpus hedge. And then on the backside of that, you have Flankers Green Island, which is a short, compact ground cover.
Oh, underneath the button, yeah.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. And then.
As long as that space stays there, I think it's.
We're pretty dependent on those buttonwoods. And how large will they be when they go in?
Those will be 14-foot overall.
Yeah, as long as he doesn't keep them small down in size in the lollipop.
Correct. That's not the, that's not the design intent.
Right.
Go ahead, Dave. I want to ask Tracy, I have some questions about the property itself. Is this a good time to talk about it or, and maybe it's something Chris? Um, do we want to stay on the landscaping or can? No, we don't have to stay on landscaping. I think we can go in the order we choose. So go ahead. Okay, so if my memory serves me correctly, there was a lot of impediments on this property to build almost anything on it. I looked at the seawall that faces the intercoastal. And I saw that there was between the seawall and the property line of the home. There was an area that, is that area owned by the town? Because it's not part of the property itself. Are you talking about the riprock portion? No, I'm talking about the seawall portion where the dock is. Because I've, I've been led to believe that this, that seawall was put in a little bit beyond the physical property line of the house. That's what L2 suggests, yeah. And, and so I also note that the town has, has an interest in getting a utility easement at the front of the house, correct?
Well, we have right of way in the front of the house.
Right, yeah, but let's see, item. There is a comment, yes. In the comment, it said, town is requesting five-foot drainage easement along the south property line. Okay, so my question is, if the town is asking for that and there's a possibility that there's some property between the seawall and the existing property line, we, we really have to come to terms with that because otherwise they really don't have legal access to that dock. They're crossing some property that doesn't belong to them. I have a question about those agreements. Do those agreements run with the land or are they new each time you have a new owner?
Runs with the land, however, there is an expiration, but Christie hasn't taken a look at the one that was drafted by Brian prior to.
Because I, I would suggest future agreements are limited to the term of ownership. So that when we get a new house like this, we have an opportunity to rethink those agreements.
Well, I, yeah, I haven't seen the particular land lease that issue here. With this being right of way, that's at the rear of the property, you know, with right of way, the town doesn't own it. It's actually held in trust for the public. So what you can do on there is very limited. We have an encroachment agreement that we typically do, which is what you can see on the south side of Harbor Drive North where there's certainly encroachments into that right of way. And we do that agreement with them so to allow people to put their driveways and some plantings in there. But it comes with the caveat that we could ask them to be removed at any time. So I would have to look at this land lease to see what, what that's about. Because technically, if that's part of the right of way or some other area, it might dictate what actually type of agreement you could do with the property owner. But if Brian in our office did it before, I'm assuming that must be on some portion that's not right of way. Maybe the Thompson Street by Platte comes to an end right there. So it may technically be part of the town's property. I don't know.
So we're talking about the area between the green, the red line at the very top.
Now, keep in mind that red line is just from property praiser and, and it's not specific necessarily and not always completely accurate where it's placed on the screen. So that red line may run, you know, right up to the dock.
But it, it doesn't in the survey.
Okay.
Documents here, it's quite similar, if not appearing to be, especially on that west side, that there's a strip of land between the seawall and, and the property.
Does the public have access to that strip of land in that dock?
Well.
Be it the north side, they might, I don't know. Because isn't the north side of that.
The north side of the town is the extension of Thompson Street right of way.
And I'm not doing it to bother you guys. I think though, before you start out on this, you need to look at everything that could affect how the house turns out. Because I think largely we're very much in favor of it. A lot of issues here that we're working with, and I just want to make sure they don't get lost. Thank you. If there's no other, Penny, do you have some questions or comments? I, I have a couple, if you don't mind. In visiting the site, I noticed that, as typical cul-de-sacs, but apparently especially this one, that, that off-street parking is limited. And there, and the parking that's on street is very, very limited. I noticed that, and, and this is a typical situation in a lot of Ocean Ridge where we're counting two-car garages as part of the parking, but that people don't park their cars in the two-car garage. I saw one driveway, two doors up with five cars in the driveway stacked right up to the, to the edge of the curb. Another one with four cars in the driveway. And I want some assurance that there is room for more than these two cars here external to the garage for parking off-street here. Is it, what's your estimate? Can you pull four, five cars in there excluding the garage?
Yeah. So what we're showing on the site plan is, you know, two cars on the interior of the garage and two on the exterior. But we have, we have room for two more cars in that water court. They're just spaced comfortably on there, but if you needed to, you could fit four cars on that water court.
Yeah, I think, I think that's necessary. And the, the swing arcs there, is that suggesting that there's going to be a gate across there?
Yes.
And why is that? That's not typical in Ocean Ridge.
It's just a privacy gate.
Yeah, it changes the character of the neighborhood. I, I don't like it personally. I think it, it, it's not a very neighborly arrangement. And where we mainly see it in Ocean Ridge is in the estate homes on the oceanfront. But there's very few homes elsewhere in town that have gated driveways. I'd hate to make this the new, the, the new precedent for moving forward. And so I, if it's within code and allowable, it's just, I, I would discourage it. And if the homeowner looks around their neighborhood and drives, I don't think there's another gate like that on north, on North Harbor. And so I'd, I'd encourage you to rethink it. You know, we're in a, we're a neighborhood, we're, we're a community where neighbors walk their dogs and, and, and get acquainted with neighbors and, and it just, just a personal comment. Thank you. So thank you about the answer about the parking, off-street parking. I have a question of, of a couple inconsistencies with the drawings that I'm trying to understand. And it could be some revisions that didn't get incorporated in all of them. And on A300, which is a crossover, there's a stairway that goes up to what I think is what's on A202 is referred to as the lounge. But the stairway says to office. So, so is, is there an office?
No, it's a lounge. Take a look at the plan, it's designed to go up and, you know, capture the views of the water.
So it's a mislabeling on that stairway? Okay, and, and another similar question. And on A303, this is another cross-section. There's two references to garage bath. But when I look at the regular A drawing of the garage, A200, I don't see a garage bath.
I think it was just something that we were designing at the beginning stages of the home, but there's.
Okay, thank you.
There was two things that Vice Chair commented on that Cory also proposed during the, the gate is on the right of way. Right now is proposed, so in order for us to place it there, right of way permit will be here. So that was one of Cory's comments in regards to that gate in the driveway. And then also the steps in the back, the steps, I believe I saw them in the five-foot and they could not be there. So they might need to be renewed.
We're, we're working on the redesigning the five footsteps for, to comply with that.
So those were a couple of comments that staff had.
Right.
So Vice Chair.
Yes, please.
Since that, if that is in the town right of way, can, can this commission take a position that we would be not supportive of the gate?
Yes, we can. It could be a, a statement and encourage staff to.
To say no.
To say no, yeah. As a resident of Harbor Drive North, I, I think I can tell our new folks that it's a nice neighborhood. You know, there's always bound to be somebody that's a little bit different. But I think you'll, I think you'll find that you don't need a gate to make good friends. So that's, that's my feeling. Just probably, if you can just let it go, it might make your place look more elegant, but it's elegant enough. We, the town building official was not present when we went through staff comments. I'll ask Derani, do you have any comments that, and if so, please be sworn in?
Pardon? Yes, good morning. I think we worked pretty well. Cory and Tara actually reviewed from the outside in. The actual building itself, I mean, I personally, we didn't have anything from a construction point of view. And that's the portion of the job that I focus in on at this stage of the review. So with regards to the building codes for the structure itself, I mean, we must find the issues on the outside Cory and Tara.
Thank you.
I have a question for Derani.
Please.
Derani, looking at this data calculation sheet, it looks like Manny was the one that, that did the zoning review versus the applicant's numbers. All over the place. There, there are numbers on here that are 150% difference and is an example. Look at, look at the impervious number at the bottom. 3,282 feet from the applicant and Manny says it's 5,089.
And the covered balcony, 394 versus 926.
Correct.
Which also leads me to, if we can talk about the large two-story structure that's alternately called the office and the lounge on top and an outdoor dining on the bottom. That's not included in the, I take it, the floor area ratio? Or is that included in it?
This could be mine sometimes and maybe one of these, I can have one here for the calculations. It does differ because here in what we did, sometimes the applicant doesn't necessarily do that. We do have, if they have open space where we put in 300 and that could also add to some discrepancies that maybe applicants are not aware of either in the calculating.
Well, that, my point is, when, when you, when you send this out to us, I don't know if, and I'm assuming I'm going to support the town, but Manny is the one that's correct. But, but how does the applicant come up with things that are so dramatically different? And that, the numbers that the applicant was using are the ones that determined how they designed the footprint of their house.
Ultimately.
So where was this disconnect going through this entire process that no one said, you know, we're not on the same page?
Haven't we seen this, this in previous?
Too many times.
Yes, so.
And there always is even during building permit, as long as Manny says that it's below what's the required, the maximum allowed per code he's provided. So that's why, you know, the discrepancies, Manny doesn't have an issue because it's below what the code allows.
The floor area ratio being within, well, in the applicant 0.03%.
Yeah.
I'm an economist, I appreciate the excessive use of decimal points. But boy, that certainly echoes the earlier comments. If you squeezed every square inch that you could possibly get a full covered area. But you're assuring me that in that covered area calculation, this large two-story structure that's open isn't.
All the area calculations are depicted. I mean, we're precise on the computer. That's why we get to that decimal point. And, and you know, that's the thing that we initially do is we make sure that we're building within. And, and you know, that's the thing that we initially do is we make sure that we're building within, obviously we want to maximize whatever we can, obviously to build. But we keep it within the threshold, just as, you know, as you look at the plan, we keep everything within the required.
But based on that statement, your number should have been greater than Manny.
Well, I don't know if Manny is doing it on the computer. We're doing it right to the building.
But we're, we're, we're 1,000 feet or more off. We have errors here that are 49, excuse me, 59% difference, 42% difference, something that's 150% larger. That, we're not talking the decimal point here.
Right.
We're talking marking it with, with big crayola crayon and cutting it with an axe.
No, understood. And I'd like to see how he's performing his calculations. Because if you look at our plans, we have every single area depicted and the percentage is the same.
Tracy, possibly at the next meeting or another meeting, this topic could be addressed by either having Manny here or having Corey talk us through. I think just education on all of us, better understanding what we're seeing here. Because it, it used to be I studied these and then I get to where I kind of throw my, you know, throw it aside because it doesn't match up. And I have to trust staff has signed off on it. And we'd like to have a better understanding because it helps us zero in on pertinent issues. And, and possibly pertinent issues like we're talking about these outdoor spaces that need to be addressed in workshops in the future.
Now, for this particular case, you can go ahead and do the same thing you did with another application. And do a condition that none of these outdoor spaces ever becoming closed.
Right. Yeah.
I agree with what you're saying that he needs to explain it to us because I, I see what you're saying, Neil, that in, on a couple of these things, like the building footprint, the applicant's saying it's 6,000 square feet. Manny's saying it's only 3,500.
Right.
Right. But then Manny says the impervious is more than the applicant says it is.
Right.
So it doesn't jive, but it, it clearly, I mean, the applicant's even saying the building footprints are more, so.
Yeah. I, I think we're really limiting the amount of pervious we have on most of these sites. This one benefits from the off-site property. They, they have this nice drawing with all the green lawn, but the green lawn isn't on site for this, this property. And, you know, I'm not one that is in favor of calculating the drain fields as a part of the pervious. And I think that's where we really, if you took that out, you'd find we have very limited pervious and we're creating more drainage issues on these sites.
I think that must be what is the difference when you look at the last three rows. The Manny's numbers for impervious, impervious add up to 100%. But the applicants only add up to 78 or 79%. So do you, do you understand why there'd be, your, your total area of pervious and pervious doesn't add up to your lot, Manny's too.
It's not the way I like to spend my weekend. Yeah. Going back to Freddie, when we do our calculations, you know, we, we do it the same way that they do. We do it CAD and it comes out with the square footage.
This is as simple as, you know, that it has to add, it has to add to the total site area.
Yeah, I'll have to double check that.
And I think that you may have not included the septic and, and drain field in, in one of those two areas.
But the drain field is part of the pervious because it needs to be pervious to operate as a drain field.
Well, that's why, that's what I'm suggesting. When you go try to find your discrepancy, that's probably where it is.
There was a drawing that had arcs of where footprints of the house could be.
It was, I don't mean to interrupt, Neil, but you just triggered something here. There was some discussion about moving the fire hydrant, which is something we don't decide. It's just one beach.
It has to, we have to have a fire hydrant within so many feet of another one. So that would, you can't just move it.
Right. But I, I, I think that, didn't it show it from the right side of the driveway entryway, maybe to the other side of the property? I was just.
Because if it moves at too many feet from one of the property owners, then another hydrant would have to be installed. And I would assume that would be at the. We, we, we shouldn't have to bear that cost. Okay.
Sorry if I interrupted you. Train of thought, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine.
Did you find the drawing you wanted to?
I answered my own question.
All right. Any other commission comments? Yes, that's, is there any member of the public who wishes to submit any relevant information or make any comment or have any questions for the applicant? See none? Oh, please.
Email, so Chair Marsh did not be present, but he did send me a public comment in regards to this, to this project. And below all these comments, sheet L2 recommends to shade trees in lieu of the two wild date palms. One end of entry driveway and one of W of entry drive. Add calm along west elevation of house to break up mass and vertical height of building. Add low planting at base of pool wall on north and northwest. Continue what is shown on the rear elevation on sheet 3D sheet.
Could you, could you read, we're not up with you on that one. I got the, I got the shade trees for date palms, but. Hey.
If you could slide over a little bit.
Front elevation reduced second floor placing by one vertical panel in the stair tower upper foyer and hall to bed two, four panels instead of five. Front garage elevation reduce heights of windows and lounge, lounge and lounge outer room. What's siding should be horizontal instead of vertical. Label all materials on all elevation drawings. On sheet A 300, adjust that the second floor be reduced to 10 feet in lieu of the 11 feet. Higher group exposure to vertical wall surface is out of proportion to much vertical surface versus proposed roof height. Rear elevation north treatment on underside of gable and master terrace has no architectural reference to design the house. Alternate treatment suggested sheet A 301, left elevation 24 feet vertical wall surface. Needs some horizontal interruption to assist with breaking the vertical plane. Recommendation deferral suggested architect would dress scale and.
I'd like to ask the architect if he could kind of walk through these. These are important comments because they come from our chairman who's doing jury duty today. And we, we don't want you to get away too, too easily because of his absence.
Yeah, actually, Carl, the elevation, and if I could just, how do you do it? Because you're sharing the.
I can't do both at once.
Can I, can I borrow this?
Yeah. If you could just kind of walk through his points, because I think they, they're educated professionals' comments.
Okay, so let's go to the front elevation first.
Do we have more copies of those notes?
If you go to the, the cover sheet, just the renderings, I could see, or yeah, that'd be great. Okay. So, you know, let me see here. He's suggesting the second floor be reduced to 10 feet instead of 11. You know, house of this caliber, if we reduce the, the timing on the second floor, the spaces are going to be too low. Your glass is going to feel too shrunk. And for this type of architecture, you know, the glazing is an integral part of the design. So it's just going to bring things off scale. The perspective of the rendering does give it an elongated look to it, but in reality, it's, it's within its proportions. If we are too shortened it up, it's going to feel too stubby. And we did, you know, look at various options of proportions and having the glass where we have it now, you know, keeping the timing at 11 foot is the, the way to go. So I discourage lowering the house in that respect. We're within all the building height regulations and everything else. We feel that the massing is perfectly justified, keeping the, the timing.
The overall height's what, about 31 feet, 31 feet?
Yeah.
31 feet from the, from the finished floor elevation, which is up how much?
Seven nine foot.
Yeah, to nine foot. So it, it's a tall building.
So it says height of group exposure. So we're within the roof height there as well. If we go to the rear elevation really quick, please, Carl. Ah, yeah, the rendering.
Is that A 300 that has the front area?
There we go. The same real, it should treatment of underside of gable at master terrace has more architectural reference to design of the house. So if you take a look at the house, you know, we're, we're doing a coastal seaside with Dutch influences. As you see, you know, we have the Dutch gables. We've got the, the pediment design. We've got a couple of, you know, these small arches that give architectural design to the elevation. If, if he's looking for additional detail, we can blow it up, give him some additional, additional detail to emphasize what we're doing. A rendering sometimes a little difficult to depict all those elements because it is a rendering, so to speak. But if he's looking for additional detail, we, we feel we've given a lot of detail underneath it. So to run you through the rear elevation, if you look at that master terrace, underneath that terrace, you're going to have nice wood treatment. You've got the white stucco and you've got the dark tile roof. You've got the wood elements that tie into the ceiling as well. And the architectural elements over at the terrace do define that space. It, it really frames the, the outdoor, the outdoor terrace to the master there. So it is an architectural element. Instead of just, you know, going flat, which you look at the space adjacent to it on the left. You know, that has just a typical header where the master is accented with the, with the pediments there. That frame the, the terrace itself. So we feel that that is actually architecturally sound and gives it a unique touch in, in emphasizing the master terrace itself. It says on 301 left elevation, 24 inch wall needs some horizontal interruption to assist with breaking another plane. Can we pull up the A 301 left elevation, please?
This is an area where we're increasingly having concern because of the higher elevations of these houses. If we're talking about, what do we say? It's going to be a six foot or five foot photocopos. The neighbor is going to see a lot of the side of these higher houses now, and we want to make sure they're not flat elevations.
Okay. So you're saying left elevation, 24 inch vertical wall surface. These horizontal interruptions is, where is he referring to that?
I think right above the three air conditioning units on the left elevation, maybe. A 301. Okay.
Um, actually, Carl.
That's not what we got. What was up there is different than what we had. It's just what he's talking about, you think?
Yeah, I think we start with this.
Yeah, we can maybe pull up one of these 11 by 17s on, on the other half.
So what was Mark's?
Can you?
Issue with the?
Repeat the comment. I'm sorry. You're, you're the only one with the comments list right now.
It says left elevation, 24 foot vertical wall surface.
Yeah, well, if you have the 13. Yeah. So that's where I said, if you look at the area that's where the three air conditioning compressors, I think that's what they are.
Yeah.
Right above that is 24 feet of uninterrupted white wall.
I mean, it's, you'll never see that. It's the complete side of the house, but um, what we could do is you see the repetition that we've got going on there on right to the right of the, that white area that he's depicting to or referencing to. What we could do is we can continue that repetition a little further to break up the space, just to give it a little bit more architectural.
What, what are those lined areas?
So those, those are loubered openings.
Oh, okay.
That's a terrace out there.
Okay.
And so what we could do is just kind of mimic that.
Yeah.
In order to, to break up the white space.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
So he circled way up on top.
Excuse me, we have a question.
Yes, the, the AC units are shown as elevated to finish door level. The pool equipment is elevated up.
Okay.
When you submit a building draw.
Okay.
Did somebody bring out? So that circle thing that Mark had, what was, I still fail to see what the issue was.
Last equation, 24 feet vertical wall surface needs some horizontal interruption to assist with breaking the vertical plane.
Well, that, that. Yeah, no, but then the circle there is separate from that. It's the glass.
I think he just wants to define the, the details of that, which I will, will provide that in greater detail.
So, so you're in agreement to continue this loubered breaking up that?
Yeah, if we can add another element of the loubered area just to carry the theme.
Yeah, I think that would be.
It'd be nice. Thank you. We, we don't want to only look at the front elevations. We want to design the house. Neighbors have to live with this too. Carla, you now have the list, right?
Yeah.
Any further comments that we haven't addressed?
Can you go back?
So we talked about 301. We talked about 300, which was regarding the second floor. Be reduced to 10 and do of 11, but the architect is discouraging it. Higher group exposure to vertical wall surface is out of proportion to much vertical surface versus the proposed roof height and anything. You let the height up.
Yeah, no, it's integral with the design. If, if we shorten the height, it's going to feel stubby, not.
And then you asked about the low planting at base floor of the wall.
Come on down, lower our table.
Play that again. We didn't talk about that.
Um, he had a couple of landscaping comments about palms along the west elevation of the house to break up mass. Add low planting at base of pool wall on north and northwest. Front elevation reduced second floor, floor gate, number one vertical panel is stair tower upper foyer and hall to bed two, four panels instead of five.
I, I think this is being too complicated. I think they need to see, can we make copies of that? So that maybe vice chair can have one and they can have one because it's too hard to follow when you're reading all that detail. I'm so sorry.
Look, just wait.
Okay, sorry. I just can't follow.
Right, we are in public comment, so you can step forward. But you would have to come to the microphone and say, name and address.
Brick plan again, 5556 North Ocean Boulevard. I am an alternate for the zoning on, on page one. I'd like Derani to refer to the height of the retaining wall, which is 8.67 feet on the intercoastal side, Tom, or Thompson Street side. And then there on the southeast side, there are two, well, there, actually it's one, but it's a little dog in the retaining wall. But it's 7.7.17, is that?
The north side is 5.5. The 8.67 is up against the pool, second retaining wall on the pool side.
Okay. Okay, all right. And is that within our ordinance?
So at the edge of the property, on a side wall, the maximum height is six feet.
Right.
And one thing I'd like you guys to think of is that because you know of a change of vertical height, you are going to be required to install a barrier slash fence, minimum three foot high. But that will also add to the overall height of your wall. But that will also add to the overall height of your wall. So you know, looking at not six but nine. Then you probably have to do some kind of terracing. To not exceed the maximum six foot height.
So in the landscape plans, we've kind of addressed that with the terracing of the different wall heights and what might be proposed showing a barrier. So we figured that out, the transition of the wall heights and then also the transition of the safety barrier. For to a maximum of six foot.
And and on the southeast side, Johnny, the there's that that retaining wall. It's page one.
That retaining wall is elevation plot.
That is, okay, so that's been changed. It says seventeen point seventeen. Yes.
That is.
And two places.
Proper elevations are to be three feet of.
Thank you. Carla, you were the keeper of this list. How far of it? Where are we now? The the email from Mark Marsh.
The architect has only addressed A three hundred, A three hundred and one. So A three hundred, the ones that you see after A three hundred, he's saying that he's discouraged any, making any changes in regards to that. He explained his reasons. A three oh one, he said that he's would put some interruptions in there. So A three oh one, he wants to put some interruptions, so they're still addressing the top unless something was talked and I was making copies. So anywhere from sheet L two up to A three hundred, they they're missing that portion.
So we'll start at the top, work our way down from sheet L two comment and recommend two shade trees in lieu of two wild day palms. One north entry drive, one southwest entry drive. So this again comes back into the tight space of a lot. If we were to do a large shade tree to soften that architecture, we're talking a root ball of eight to ten feet. Where at the day palm, you're looking at four feet. So in my professional opinion, there's just not enough room to accommodate for that root ball within those two spaces. Because we're trying to, we have to stay off of the civil. I also think that the vertical scale of the day palms is going to better soften that architecture. Because I know there was a previous comment about height of that. So, you know, we're talking sixteen feet of here, that means from dirt to bottom of the pond is sixteen feet. And then we put the fronds on top of that and that flounces out, we're talking twenty two to twenty four feet high. So I feel like the day palm is the correct choice for these tight locations. And also, when you're trying to screen the home from a distance coming coming down the red. Um, next comment, add palms like along the west elevation of the house to break up mass and vertical height of the building. This is going to look like a flat roof house. So we have calipham trees there, and we like the caliphums because you can maintain them in a tight, compact configuration and shape. And over time, they will continue to grow vertically if you can maintain them more of a column or. Kind of sheer appearance, so we don't have to worry about them outgrowing that space. With palm trees over time, the trunks will continue to grow and that also moves the head of the palms up. Whereas these, the foliage will continue to grow as the trees grow. So they will provide a better buffer in the beginning and in the end, in my opinion.
And what height will they?
Those are going in fourteen feet.
Okay, and how high will they grow?
Oh, they're twenty five feet.
Easy. I've got a Sylvester in front of my place that's gotten too tall.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a lot of things when we're looking at selecting scale of trees is, you know, eventually you're just going to be looking out your window at telephone poles. So, you know, that's something we've always are concerned with. Add low planting at base of pool long along the north northwest. Continue with what is shown in rear elevation on sheet three D.
No, it's showing their side right now.
Yeah, that should be a problem. We can come in and do a short compact ground cover.
Thank you. And we've already talked about the front door glazing, and there's just a disagreement between two architects as to style. The front garage elevation?
Yeah. Wood siding should be horizontal for the front.
I think it is horizontal and the rendering.
Here's one spot right here. Above the girls.
Yeah, we have no problem.
Oh, I see.
So to keep it consistent.
See, that's the thing with renderings, they can become a little inconsistent, but.
What is behind the louvers?
That's just an outdoor terrace.
Oh, okay. It's not where they, that's all done.
No, it's just an architectural feature of that.
So you're taking this list home with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions off of this public comment list? Thank you. You've all done a nice job of trying to address that. And does the staff wish to make any final or additional comments?
The only question I would have the staff is before Gerani came, we had the discussion about the retaining wall causing the elimination. Of the planted area on the north side of the building. I'd just be interested if you had any comments or any other staff members about that. If you, can you put that photo back up again?
He just, he's had some questions in regards to this.
That that large vegetation area, and then I think the answer we got was at first it was not going to be disturbed. And then when they, we, the engineer decided, no, I have to build a retaining wall there. And so I have to be taken out.
And put drainage and put a water line in.
To extend some of our property.
Yeah, but that is an ugly looking screen.
Is it?
I think so.
That and install a wall and put it.
Well, the neighbor just commented, it wasn't as attractive as it looks from here.
I think it looks pretty.
Okay.
Pretty trashy.
All right, I'll, I'll stop worrying.
And if the neighbors want land to place or, you know, a life plan, it's obligation of the contractor to make sure that. Whatever you could do to mitigate the fix on the neighbor, you know, who so, you know, to kind of restore their property. In a light fashion to what was prior to your.
Does any of the other commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay. Then without any, I'll close the quasi judicial hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion if anyone has one.
Well, I'd like the gate to be a separate motion. That.
Right, why don't we start with the gate?
Make the motion that we, that the commission, this the planning and zoning commission, take the position to. Recommend to the town not to approve the gate.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hey.
And just for a clarification on that, that's if the gates in the right of what, right? Or is it if it's on their property as well?
Both.
We want to discourage gates. Great, is there a motion to approve, deny, or defer this application?
What was the, just for clarity, what was the condition that you had suggested?
Oh, that the.
Right.
So I under, I understand that Chair Marsh is recommending deferral, but I do think that. The main difference of opinion right now is two sophisticated architects. And it does fall within our, within the code what they have proposed. So I think my proposal for a motion is to move for approval based on. The architect's agreement to address the detailing concerns, the landscape concerns. The outdoor space not ever being enclosed, the pool equipment being elevated like the A C, correct, Ronnie? And any other comments by staff?
To get to.
Do we have a second? We have a motion. Okay, now we can have a discussion.
Okay, I I I didn't know we were finished with the motion.
Yeah, okay. But after a motion's made, you can amend the motion.
Okay. How how are we addressing the issue with with the dock and that sliver of land?
I think we're leaving it to staff is where it got left.
I have a note here already to address it.
Okay, and.
And the fire hydrant.
Okay.
So those would be considered staff comments.
I'm happy with that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, so there's no more.
Any any other discussion about the motion? Hearing none, like to call for a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Welcome to Ocean Ridge. Thank you. Don't ever perceive that this doesn't mean that we don't want you here or we don't like your plan. We're trying to make it better for you, but we also have, we represent your neighbors and the community, so thank you.
In the future, one quick commissioner comment, please.
Please.
I want to say thank you to our commissioners, our town manager, our staff, our town attorney. Everyone for working so hard on the acquisition of this nine acres of sensitive land. I don't think it's often that municipalities get an opportunity to buy property. Not only did we have the foresight, we have the fiscal ability to do it. And it just puts us in a great position. We have a large amount of preserved land now. And we're adding nine more acres to it, and I just think it makes Ocean Ridge that much more special. And I just thank you guys. We really appreciate it.
I'd like to add to that, that we certainly saw the community rally around and support. What the town was doing and the commission and and the commission was very responsive to the community's wishes, so thank you. And I, any other commission comments?
Yeah, I would just like to, once again. Try to. I I know staff is stretched, but can we get closer to addressing this? Outdoor space use and whether it's in the far or out.
We should put that on an agenda for us and Manny also, those calculations. I really do think it's important for us to understand why and how there can be such a difference. Even though they may both be legitimate, how, I don't know.
Thank you. Good, good point. Other staff commission comments? Dave, you're not, I'm not done, so.
No, I'm quiet.
Sit in your seat. Dave scooting his chair towards the door. I have two, one of which is a request of the other commissioners. As everyone knows, we operate in the sunshine here in Florida, so I don't get a chance to talk to these other commissioners. Outside of this meeting and we have made a very significant change over the last year, year and a half to higher elevations for these houses. And I think we need to start studying and understanding the impact. And I specifically ask each of you, over the next few weeks, you could drive by fifty four Spanish River Drive that's under construction right now. And look, they have not even started the second floor on it. And look at the building height and the height from the street of the first floor elevation. And it is clearly nine feet in the air from the street. And it and it makes these houses look much closer to the street.
Exactly.
And one of the things in this particular house, and I can remember chatting with the architect about it. And having some disagreement, and I believe it's your firm that's doing it, is that what's happening now? Is that the garages will be set down closer to street elevation and the house is at nine feet. And we create. I mean, there's three quarters of a full stairway within the garage. And all that does is makes it no longer a two story house, but like a two, two and a half story house. Two and three quarter story house, because that garage kind of starts the plane of what your eye sees as the house. And I think we may want to address in our code a maximum differential between that garage height.
If you move the garage up, it would really make a massive uninterrupted.
No, you can look at, and this, this is why I ask you go, there's a house that's been there forever. It's probably been there twenty five years that's next door, so if that's fifty four, it would be fifty five. That's it, almost the same elevation as this, but their garage is, you know, they have a steeper driveway. But it's more of a house in one plane than a house in two planes.
Just affects our drainage.
Yeah.
You just got a steep driveway with the. Brushing.
This is, you really, you really should see this. It's, it's. You think it's already done in height and it hasn't put the second floor on yet.
When we had ninety five Island Drive South in front of us, you brought up this issue with the garage. And you asked the architect and builder to lower the top of the garage and change an element above the garage door. That's that height difference.
Yeah.
Which they did. And the mitigation that that has made on that house is incredible. The house suffers from all the things that you're saying, because that house, I think, is a fourteen foot. Floor elevation. And if that garage had not been changed in its scale, the massing would have just overwhelmed you.
I think we're all trying to learn, including the architects, how to do with, deal with this higher elevation. But it's going to impact and and it impacts the cost on these houses. It's, I feel for the homeowners too. You know, I, I don't know how long you've owned this, but if that came along somewhere in the planning stage and they started telling you, you've got to add retaining walls and other things. I, I know it was a shock.
Given the fear of sea level rise, it's probably a shock if they're willing to deal with. I'd rather be a six feet higher.
My my second comment is more administrative. I will not be available to be at the commission meetings in May and June. So if you're, if any of the commissioners are willing to be the spokesperson and can make the May and June meetings touch base with Carla. So she knows who's going to be representing the commission at those meetings. Thank you. Without any further comments, I'll call for adjournment. Okay.
Does anyone else have no absences during the summer?
I go north May first, but if I'm absolutely needed, I can come down just on a one off.
I will be away in June for certain and potentially August, depending. I will be away in June for certain and potentially August, depending on college move in. I'm not certain yet. But I'll be here if not, if it's later in that week, I'll be here.
Brett, are you here Monday, uh May?
In May.
We'll need you to sit for me in May. And, yeah. Okay, so.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Oh, and maybe maybe second, it's actually, will anybody that definitely switches the to the.
Yeah.
So I guess you have time if you want to sign up for.
You might be happy to help out in in June if the date is right.
Well, you'll be off the board by the.
Well, I I actually designed.
Right, I know, so sign back up. That's real simple. Just reverse your resignation.
And uh question for staff, how are we coming for getting alternates for the upcoming summer months? Roger, are you gonna sign back up?
Yeah, I've put in my application to continue.
All right, good, we're good. As it's, as we heard, there's going to be summer absences, so.
So is, did Brett rescind her resignation?
I think her and Carla have to work on the legality of that. But I won't be here in May and if 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 Roger's not and Brett can't cover, then you're going to be a four person commission in May.
That's.
Unless Mark's still on jury. All right, hearing no other comments, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'll be your turn.